Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's public hearing for Wednesday, July 14th, 2021, relative to Bill 2021-1448. Will the clerk please read the title of the bill?
Bill 1448 Resolution Approving a New Institutional Master Plan Under the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Article Two, Chapter 905, Section 90503D, and Article Seven, Chapter 922, Section 92212E, for the University of Pittsburgh, named Institutional Master Plan dated April 2021 on property zone EMI, Educational Medical Institution District Four and Fifth Ward, districts number three, six, and eight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And for the record, we hope to be joined shortly by other council members, especially those in districts three and six, but all council is welcome. And they hopefully will be joining us shortly. First order of business is an introduction by members of City Planning Department, Kate Rakas and Corey Lehman, and a presentation by the University of Pittsburgh representatives joining us today. And then following that will be testimony from our registered speakers. So I'm happy to hand it over to Kate Rakas and Corey Lehman.
Thank you. Good afternoon. One technical item, it looks like Michael Costu and Rachel O'Neal, who are representing the University of Pittsburgh, are still on the sort of waiting list. I think they were intended to be speakers as part of the presentation for the university. So thank you. This is an application for a new institutional master plan for the University of Pittsburgh. It's included in the existing Educational Medical Institution zoning district EMI. It's not a proposed expansion of that zoning district. City Planning Commission held a public hearing on this institutional master plan back on April 20th of this year, and they made a positive recommendation to city council. And we have mailed notice to abutting property owners within 150 feet of this application, 21 days in advance of this hearing, as required by the zoning code. So that's my brief introduction, and I'll turn it over to the university to make their presentation.
Great, thank you. We're still getting our speakers lined up. We're having some technical difficulties on our end. My name is Owen Cooks, Assistant Vice Chancellor for Planning, Design, and Real Estate for the University of Pittsburgh. Joining me is Mary Beth McGrew, the Associate Vice Chancellor of Planning, Design, and Real Estate. Also speaking today will be Paul Supowicz, Lena Distillio, and Jamie Ducar, for our Community and Government Relations Office. Let me just do a sound check. Beth, are you able to hear us now?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so I'm going to share my screen with the presentation that we submitted. Bear with me a moment while I get out of this mode. Get back up to the top. There we go. Can you all see the title side, City Council Hearing?
Yes.
Great. So on the agenda today, we're going to give a background, kind of an overview of the IMP, the development sites. And then there's quite a bit of supporting documentation that goes into an IMP that surrounds all of those development sites. We'll be spending some time going through that. And then, of course, we can take any Q and A if you like. Turn it over to Beth to give a little bit of background on the university.
Yes, just to get a platform and a framework for the development, just a bit about the university. I know many of you, all of you probably know it well, but there are 16 schools and colleges, 145 acres, and 131 buildings, and 300-plus centers, institutes, and laboratories. Our student body is 18,785 undergraduates, 8,225 graduates, 865 faculty research, 7,000, you can read these, 7,000 staff, and 7,000-plus beds of student housing. I think it's good to have that in mind as we talk about our plan, just as a framework.
Great, thanks. And then Paul, do you want to talk about some of the impacts and accelerator impacts of the university?
Sure, just very briefly, I wanted to give a high-level overview here that the university is a large economic generator and engine for the city and the region with an annual economic impact over $4.2 billion. I think, you know, well over $870 million in outside research funding that comes in and cycles throughout the Western PA economy. You can see the other numbers there about your startup companies' formation, which has really picked up in recent years prior to the pandemic, and as well as the direct jobs and indirect jobs and the presence of Pitt alumni in Allegheny County. We've also initiated a number of programs, and these are just a couple, four examples. You know, a program with the Pittsburgh Public Schools, the Pittsburgh Scholars Program that guarantees the valedictorians and salutarians in our Pittsburgh high schools admission to one of the Pitt campuses, and providing financial support there as well. You know, we've been identified recently as an Innovation and Economic Prosperity with a Innovation and Economic Prosperity Place Award from APOU, recognizing our work in the community and social and cultural development work. You know, we've worked hard on our Community Engagement Center initiative over the last few years, and that continues to bear fruit, I think, around the city. So without belaboring it, we, you know, we really are heavily engaged in the city and working closely with our elected officials and look forward to continuing that.
Great, thanks, Paul. We're going to go back to Beth now to give a little preface on the plan, talk about mission and vision, as well as some of the needs the institution identified through the planning process.
So it's really important for large institutions such as Pitt to take the time to make a plan, to pause in our day-to-day activities, and really think about where we've been, where we're headed, the community that we live in, and the kind of education we're delivering. So this master plan will capture a lot of those big ideas in the physical realm, and it includes multiple development options with broad parameters that are sensitive to their context and allow for a little flexibility. As we've all known, we had to experience, thus our electronic communication right now. The university will engage, has engaged with the community and participates in the city's approval process. The city's been most helpful in the planning department, in our discussions with them. And we know that these sites are balancing flexibility and accountability to a public process. Next slide. So our mission, obviously, we want to educate a diverse group of students, and it's very wonderful in Pittsburgh how the history of the city and the immigrants and the university's nationality rooms set a nice platform for beginning a diverse student student body and broad realms of experiences coming onto campus. It expands all of our boundaries of knowledge, and that's always one of the goal of the Institutional Master Plan. We also wanted to enrich the quality of life of both those who participate directly with the university and those who live in its environs. We want to meet our strategic goals with advancing educational knowledge, engaging in research of impact that strengthens our communities. We want to promote diversity and inclusion. We want to embrace the world and build foundational strength. They're broad, generic goals, but it's interesting when you go to make a specific decision to keep those big ideas in mind. It helps folks to take the high road and to always remember what we're here for. Our IMP goal specifically, we want to provide for flexible growth, to support the student experience, and really important to identify opportunities, because we are nothing but of the city, to identify opportunities for neighborhood enhancement. Thank you. Back to you, Paul.
Can you just touch briefly, Beth, on needs of the institution?
So we have a loose parameter of growth. We anticipate something between 5% and 10% over the next 10 years. We don't expect to see it all at once. And we have some, a few select programs, for example, the undergraduate degree in public health, those kinds of programs where we may see greater increases than others. We want to accommodate this projected growth by adding to our student housing campus-wide, upgrading our existing housing stock, including affordable and quality options that encourage more and more students to live on campus. We anticipate a net increase of 775 new beds over this period, with 2,400 new beds needed and 1,625 beds taken out of the existing inventory for renovation.
Great, thanks, Beth. Back to you, Paul, a little bit on the process we went through in developing the plan. You're muted, Paul.
Thank you. 15 months into the pandemic, you'd think I'd have this down by now. But in terms of the community process, you know, we understood that an effort, a master plan, a document, and a process of this complexity and length required a significant investment of time and effort. And to that end, we worked to develop a mix of outreach activities and formats that would meet the stakeholders of Oakland wherever they may be. The primary vehicle for community input was a series of eight public meetings held across the 2019 calendar year. And in those meetings, we took, you know, careful stock of what we heard from our neighbors and used that feedback to inform what would eventually become the Neighborhood Enhancement Strategies Framework. And you'll see the notes from those meetings in the appendix to the master plan. These weren't kind of one-way directed output meetings, but rather, you know, even though we really did have a ton of content to get out there, we had a variety of formats. We broke participants into groups. We rotated through content areas and really used, you know, human-centered design methods in order to make the process engaging and comprehensive. We also stood up a public website that the team pointed the community towards, not only in all of our IMP meetings, but also in all of the Neighborhood Association meetings that we attend regularly. The commitments that were submitted through the website were fielded by the larger IMP team and responses made public. And, you know, but at the same time, we felt that it was important not to just invite the community to our campus for the process. And to that end, we sought, requested time on the agendas for the Neighborhood Associations meetings and in the community where a member of the planning team would join a member of the Office of Community and Governmental Relations to ensure that participation wasn't just limited to those that could travel to the meetings we held on or around campus. And once the draft IMP was available, it was publicly posted, but also printed, you know, that thick or so, and copies were distributed throughout the neighborhood, five different locations around Oakland, so that community members without the internet access or who preferred to work through the printed copy had that opportunity. And I think that helped to ensure broad availability and participation. But I would also mention that the office, you know, the university is an active participant in regularly in the civic life of the Oakland community. We staff the Neighborhood Association meetings, as I mentioned, but also Business District meetings, Innovation District meetings, Code Enforcement Project meetings, Landlord Alliance meetings, and meetings for accessibility and advocacy throughout the neighborhood, among others. So the IMP lines of communication did not close after we ended the large public meeting phase, but rather moved into community spaces where we could continue to be responsive to what we were hearing and what our Oakland stakeholders were continuing to advocate for, and also to keep them informed of what turned out to be an understandably very lengthy process, given the IMP requirements, but also given that we did this in the midst of a pandemic as well. So maybe if you could go to the next slide, this is really just a listing of what I referred to in the initial meetings with the city, but then the public meetings throughout 2019 that we held around the neighborhood, I'm sorry, on campus, and then followed up in the neighborhood meeting. So, you know, a very robust process and had a, you know, wealth of opportunities for participation and input, which we really valued and tried to implement wherever it was appropriate.
Great, thanks, Paul. The IMP boundary area, which of course is set within the zoning code, is within the Educational Medical Institutional District. That's shown in light blue here. The orange outline is Pitt's 1,000-foot radius around that boundary, which is another requirement in the plan that we call out any ownership at that time of properties that we may have within that area that may be subject to development, whether in the EMI or not. Here you can see the overlay of the existing zoning around the EMI district that most of Pitt's campus sits within. And obviously, we border several different types of districts, from residential districts to business districts and so on. And so the plan very thoughtfully contemplated where those borders meet, those sensitive areas, to ensure minimal disruption in development. The plan also requires us to look out to a pretty long horizon of 25 years, and predicting what buildings or needs might be at that point in time is challenging, but we are asked to identify potential sites and at a high level, potential usage for those sites. So that is detailed within this document. And then more appropriately, in the 10-year horizon, we have identified through these 12 different districts about 25 sites for development. It would be quite a feat for us to develop 25 sites in 10 years. This is an example of the flexibility that Beth was talking about earlier. It allows us, based on our needs and our growth, to have a couple of different options within the 10-year window to develop the needs that the institution may have at that time. Another part of the document that also speaks to the flexibility is the need to define as much as possible to a zoning code standard what development on any particular site might look like. That, of course, has to be balanced with the thought that a lot of times we haven't hired an architect to even start any planning on a particular site. And so the push and pull between those was resolved by this kind of a strategy, what we call the yellow box. And so the yellow box identifies by maximum height and gross square footage and potential uses, what we think we may do in the future. And then that future building, once an architect is hired, our program is known, is then developed within that box. And I use our Scape Hall expansion, which is under construction right now, which went through an alternative compliance process for master plan approval, as a good example of how this strategy works. So the initial yellow box on the left was potentially where we might expand Scape, meet those programmatic needs. And then on the right is the actual build-out within the yellow box, but obviously, a much more subdued version of the potential that existed previous to that. And so you'll see throughout the document, in the 10-year plan, yellow boxes across those 20-some sites that suggest, to a zoning code level, what the parameters of the development are, but still allow us the flexibility to solve each building program as the site requires it. So we're going to transition now on the agenda back to Beth to talk about some of those supporting guidelines that go along with all of the sites and the overall development of the master plan. Beth?
We'd like to talk a little about our open space and pedestrian circulation and landscape, and then design guides for the building. It's important that we accommodate the topography that is in the city and complement it, and that we make it as accessible as possible, and that we have community engagement as possible. Next slide. So our urban design guides apply both to the building and the landscape. We have criteria that fosters design that's compatible with the existing campus. We would not want our most contemporary design to be in the historic district. As an example, we want to create an enhanced campus environment. It's important to define what that means. Part of it is that many people can enjoy the benefits of that, that it serves the educational purpose, and that it's a compliment to the community that we're in. So we're promoting open spaces, both for the campus and the surrounding community as appropriate for their engagement, and establish as much as possible pedestrian experience and a barrier-free routes. I say as much as possible because Oakland is a very dense urban environment, and we want the pedestrian, we want to keep people moving on their feet as much as possible to make it a pleasant environment. And the use of materials, there are always new things out there, but we want materials and architectural details that contribute both to an innovative but an integrated environment. So some examples, you all know, in our historic area, we have Georgian, Greek Revival, Italianate, Romanesque, Beaux-Arts, 20th Century Modern. And these different buildings often exist compatibly in an urban environment. And when we go to renovate these, we want to be sensitive both to the surrounding neighbors and to the need to preserve a lot of the architectural heritage while making sure that our buildings are meeting all the standards for energy today and meet our programmatic needs. Next slide. Our streetscapes are very important, everything from how we are able to manage stormwater, where we place the street trees, keeping the sidewalks as wide as possible for multiple pedestrians to traverse at once, and also giving the bicyclists a place in our lanes. So we're looking at all different sorts of things in each of those streetscape design guides, and we'll work closely with the city on that, as most of our streets are city streets. So the four elements of the IMP that require tracking throughout the 10-year plan, open space, tree canopy, stormwater, and parking. The university wants to prepare sheets that make it easy for planning and zoning to review where we are in our commitments over that 10-year period on not just a site-by-site basis, but in a holistic way. And so the university is committing to always maintaining a positive balance for, if we take, for example, if we take down five trees, we want to make sure that we're six trees ahead of our total count, as a simple example. In the public realm green spaces, we have a lot of opportunities to enhance our open space commitments in the public realm to provide opportunities for shade, opportunities for places for people to pause, and most importantly, opportunities to develop a sense of place that are publicly accessible and serve as they are able. Thus, the picture here, where we're using a building that we're planning on O'Hara Street as a way to get up to the next street by going into the building and using the elevators. So making use of our topography, both for beauty, for circulation, and for ease of travel, and establishing a sense of place and developing an aesthetic quality for the public realm is really important. Another example, if you went through that building to get up to the higher level, we're proposing that instead of the paper streets that our steep stairs are known as, that we make paths that might be a little longer, but actually feel shorter because they're pleasant to traverse, that you can get from one building to another on the hillside, and that we have opportunities on the hillside that we don't have today where you can enjoy them. The existing conditions of our hillside, they're not bad, but they aren't necessarily easy to engage. And right now, given climate change, given the pandemic, we know how important it is to have human-engaged landscape. So our goal is to make our landscape as enjoyable to us as it is to the goats today. So we want our stairs to be split and have paths and places to pause and rest. We want places in our hillside where we have, we'd like to remove all of the invasive species. And we've done some soil analysis and do plantings that are conducive to trees growing and also conducive to helping to stabilize the soil and then allowing opportunities for people to go up and have their lunch on the hill and enjoy the views. So we've divided that, just as a way to think through, how do we think about this? We developed our landscape into these three terms, Urbain, Rusticated, and Sylvan. The Urbain would be more formal, more architectural in nature, and heavily trafficked. So you might find those in the two previous slides on the entrance to the building on O'Hara. Whereas if you were walking up the hillside halfway up, you might see more rusticated stones, stones that you might have found in that hillside, a little more native color. And if you got up to the Sylvan, that might be over near Falk School, where it's a very heavily forested area. So we've taken these themes in order to help us with our design guides of what kind of trash receptacles, what kind of lighting, what kinds of seeding, what kinds of planting, so that we have an organizational framework that you might not know is there, but that intuitively gives you a sense of order and assists in developing the natural environment. Next slide. These are images that illustrate that. You can see on the bottom, the rusticated, so you'll see a touch of color. You might find seats that are more informal. And on the top, the more Urbain, where you might see some lights and a much more busy urban street front. Our tree preservation and tree canopy, we spent a lot of time on this, looking at how many acres we have covered by trees. We're proposing an increase, but rather than simply selecting trees and placing them, we want to select trees that we know will live in this environment. In the heavily forested area, we want to plant the undergrowth so that it's designed to be moving along, to be dying and being part of the forest floor as the trees get larger. And we have some examples of these, and we've also hired a biologist on our team to help us select the right kinds of plants. Again, the relationship of the tree canopy, we're looking at how we calculate our trees, and we're using that design, something scientists call the basal method of measurements, where you take it, it would be like you're standing at your countertop height and slicing off the forest at that level and looking at all the different growths that you have there. We've learned from the scientists, it's a little more sustainable way to calculate our trees, and we want to do that and also meet the guidelines that the city has for us. But we're really looking at a more sustainable reforestation of the hillside. And its heritage is that on the hills of Pittsburgh already. Next slide.
Great. Thanks, Beth. I was going to touch a little bit on infrastructure mobility, which are two of the longer sections that are within the IMP to meet those requirements. On mobility, and Beth mentioned this, is one of those things that we track. We're tracking parking and managing it across a 10-year horizon. Our goal is a net zero increase or decrease to the parking that we have today. But there are some strategies that we have to lessen the need for cars within Oakland, including decreasing those single occupancy vehicles through different mitigation strategies, looking at biking and other modes of transit, looking at partnerships that we can do. And we did a transportation impact study for the 10 years, assuming the full build-out, and tested all the intersections accordingly. We did an inventory of all of our bicycle facilities, and we update this inventory annually and look at bike parking relative to where people are going as destinations on campus, and try and improve the bike facilities through bike lockers and other covered storage. Overall, looking at parking, a similar strategy to having multiple sites across the 10-year plan that might not get all developed. We have multiple options for maintaining that net zero of parking. We've identified where our parking is today. We've identified several potential parking options. And between those two, we will map towards the needs that we have. I'm going to kick it back to Beth to talk a little bit about, nope, sorry, one more slide. This is the, from that transportation study where we analyze the intersections, looking at as if we didn't do anything within the 10-year plan to if we, which I've said would be very challenging, built out the entire. Looking at as if we didn't do anything within the 10 year plan to if we, which I've said would be very challenging, built out the entire. 10 year plan and all of the intersections. Pretty much perform as they perform as if we made none of those improvements. And this study looks at not just our development, but obviously Oakland is is a. An area with many neighbors and institutions. And so it tries to take into account all the future conditions that might exist within Oakland. I'll turn it back over to Beth to talk a little bit about sustainability.
University has recently published an update to its sustainability plan. And as you know, most, most of our new buildings, all of our new buildings have been LEED certified. We're paying a special attention to waste management and water conservation. So some of the goals that we have are reducing the greenhouse grass gas emissions, particularly by travel to below to 50%. Below the 2013 Oakland baseline. There are simple things like the bus pass where it's wonderful to take advantage of that and not have to drive through town. There are other things. Like encouraging folks to car share and. Really looking at what we can do in our built environment in our lead and well building certifications that contribute to that goal. We want to expand composting, so even in our. Exterior areas having multiple bins. We want to reduce our landfill waste. We'd like to achieve water usage intensity below 50%. So a little bit beyond the low flow water showerheads that we all have seen in the marketplace, but doing more than that. And we'd like to produce 50% of our energy from renewables, the start of that is the water. And the energy that will be getting from the dam on the river. And to achieve our energy use intensity 50% below the national average. Some of the other things we're doing with water conservation is working on. How we can reuse our, how we can collect our stormwater, so we've mapped it and how we can reuse it. Reuse it more, use it more than once in our chilled water plants. Next slide. So we know that we need to protect our hillsides. So we know there sometime, well, every time I think we we dig in the upper hillside, there are old mines. And so we know we have to to grout those areas and use deep foundations. We, that's why we've faced this next. Boa point, why we've paid so much attention to our vegetation is to retain the slope and stability stability of the hillside. With vegetative structural support. And we know we want to protect those landslide prone areas and so to the extent that we can. Making our design guides and our landscape around the buildings. Compatible with those sustainability strategies rather than simply planting something that looks nice. Our stormwater management, as I mentioned, the first thing we did was do a stormwater master plan to see where our rottersheds are. And using the topography to our advantage to collect. That water that's already directed in certain paths. Each of our new buildings will have. A cistern to hold some of that water, but we're also looking to move that water down the hill. Would like to have a very large cistern and be able to keep at least four million gallons out of the four mile run. And use that water in our Pausvar chilled water plant. So while it is just a big cistern, the beauty of it is with a valve on each end, you can both collect the water. And hold the water back until the episodic event is over. So we're looking at our use of our hillside. Both to mitigate the damage that intense stormwater can do. And also to mitigate the damage that it can do when it rolls off of our property. So we've spent a lot of time and a lot of energy looking at these things, so. Obviously, we'll reduce and replace our impervious service surfaces with these. This is part of our promise to the city. To look at how much water we're. Absorbing and how much water is running off of our sites. We can look at green roofs, we can look at rain gardens and bioswales, and this was all part of our. Lands, our stormwater master plan system, cisterns where we can reclaim the water and reuse the stormwater. And we're looking at where it's feasible to use infiltration and detention tanks and pores paving. And we were all pleasantly surprised at how much water we could collect off that hillside. Both to reuse and to hold back from our big storm events, which we seem to get more and more.
Great, thank you, Beth. Transitioning back to our community and government relations team, we'll talk a little bit more about. The neighborhood enhancement strategies and plan, Lena.
Thanks, Owen. So hi, I'm Lena Dostilio. I'm Pitt's Associate Vice Chancellor for Community Engagement and I'll be joined by my colleague Jamie Ducar. And of course, we're part of the team that worked on this institutional master plan and the community engagement aspects of the process. So the neighborhood enhancement strategy that is on pages 435 through 445 of the plan. Really lays out the strategies that we're committed to undertaking over the entire life of the plan and beyond. And those strategies are designed to help us do three things, right? Alleviate any negative impacts that we have on the neighborhoods that are adjacent to our campus. Enhance the positive impacts that we have on the quality of life for our neighbors. And three, improve our neighbors' access to Pitt's programs and facilities. Next slide, please. The planning process allowed Pitt to get very clear on our responsibilities and opportunities. And I think as an anchor institution, it helps us to understand that our role can be deepened. As a collaborator and convenor, so we will continue to be in routine dialogue with and participate in. Our local community organizations and efforts that bring stakeholders together for project specific initiatives. It will help us to continue and deepen our role as a direct contributor. We do strategically deploy funding for community based programs and volunteer support for neighborhood enhancement projects. Will continue to be an investor, supporting projects that serve the university. And community goals such as Bigelow Boulevard and intersection improvements. And will continue to be a catalyst and an enabler. Implementing urban design standards, distinctive architecture and implementing strategic housing and mixed use development. And we think by embracing these roles, we've really entered into this planning process with a true hope. That we could engage our neighbors in a transparent and open dialogue. And in fact, we've heard numerous times over the length of the process, our neighbors have been very pleased and happy. With how we've entered into that into that conversation. Together, we've developed a slate of neighborhood enhancements that could fully leverage us, the university, as an asset for our neighbors. And so Jamie is going to share a little bit more about that process and also those strategies in a bit more detail so that you have a sense. Of where we're headed as a neighborhood support and enhancement, Jamie.
Thanks Lena. So I'm gonna pick up the conversation that Paul got started a little bit earlier. In our presentation and that Lena continued. As you can see on this slide, we're gonna spend just a couple of minutes talking about our process more in depth. As our team really wants to underscore the fact that the strategies that made it into our IMP document. Were co-created in an iterative process. Our first step of listen reflects the entirety of the 2019 calendar you saw earlier. So that was eight public meetings that we hosted and invited the community to. As well as multiple rounds of IMP discussions in each of the neighborhood association meetings. And for those not familiar with Oakland, it's a neighborhood of many neighborhoods. So that meant visiting the Bellfield Area Citizens Association, West Oakland Neighborhood Council, South Oakland Neighborhood Group. And Oak Cliff Community Organizations. In order to ensure that our neighbors receive the information that they needed. In order to continue alongside of us through this IMP process. We staff up to eight monthly touchpoints with stakeholders. We have before the IMP process started and will continue to as part of our standard practice. We know many of our neighbors by name and it's our hope that our relationships will continue to be the foundation for our institution. Making these neighborhood enhancement strategies realized. Documentation was an important part of our team having the capacity to reflect on what we were hearing. To start to piece together recommendations. So we had chart paper notes, notes submitted via the website, comments made in regular monthly meetings. And notes from the reflective exercises that you're able to find in the appendix of our actual institutional master plan. We're going to take that further by by. Making our documentation of our implementation a little bit more public. With a dashboard that I'll be able to share more about later. So communication isn't just between the community and our IMP planning team. After starting to assemble themes and consistent comments. We took the IMP process to our institutional leadership so that they could better understand. What we were hearing and what we needed to respond to. So in this way, we were able to create significant internal buy-in for the importance of this process, along with the external engagement that was informing the plan. And of course, of course, after informing our leadership, we have to then dig in and push. So these are what you're seeing here is a really broad, long term set of commitments for actions. We wanted to consider not only what was possible, but as Lena said, think about our role as an anchor institution. Our accountability and our implementation is just as important or even more important than planning. So our set of strategies you'll see beginning on page, the PDF page 432. We developed this set of activities and continue to check in. Making the entirety of the institutional master plan and the neighborhood enhancement strategies specifically available. By disseminating via email, hard copy with neighborhood partners and continuing to raise up the strategies in our monthly meeting touchpoints. Briefly, I'll just explain, so we're we're in the process and this is something that has come up with with some of our council people in meetings ahead of this. We hope to build an accountability dashboard associated with all of the strategies that you see embedded in in our document. So that means that any person would be able to go to a website and be able to check our progress across sustainability. Some of our economic opportunity strategies and really see where the university is able to make progress. In a way that allows folks to be able to move at their own pace. But also tag back to our teams in order to ask questions. And so that is a very big project considering the size of this institutional master plan, but it's something that we're committed to launching in the near future. Can we head to the next slide? So as I mentioned, this, this really was a collaborative and building process. And so I wanted to talk through how the strategies were were developed to show how these were responsive activities rather than institutionally generated aspirations. Five high level themes that we ended up organizing around include a full set of 74 strategies, but I'll just mention a few here so that there's some clarity. I mentioned before, economic opportunities. Those are opportunities such as committing to partnering with small businesses, minority owned businesses. To increase their share of procurement and buying within the institution. Searching for targeted ways to leverage our strength in numbers for small business success. Our Small Business Development Center is already working very intently in the region and we hope to leverage their strengths for continued growth and opportunity with our neighbors. And neighborhood quality, that means that we've agreed to go all in on neighborhood. Adopt a block programs that can reflect a pride of place and engage our students through volunteerism within the neighborhood. It also means that we'll be looking to the city to partner differently to tackle perennial issues around code enforcement and parking in the neighborhood. For physical enhancement, our team continues to refine what good urban design can look like. And we're also mindful that institutional assets can support broader place making and activation within the neighborhood. We've assembled bodies like our Public Art Commission, which will work to be intentional. And we really want to be a dynamic piece of the Oakland neighborhood mix. For retail and services, we have a great relationship with the Oakland Business Improvement District. And we understand that we're both a landlord as well as a significant consumer stakeholder in the neighborhood. So we want to activate our central core and continue an open dialogue around what can push Oakland to be more livable and inclusive. For all sorts of stakeholders and identities. And for housing, we've committed a quarter of a million dollars to the Oakland Community Land Trust, which is working to reclaim and maintain affordable owner occupied homes in the neighborhood. We're also currently an active part of the Oakland Neighborhood Plan and Process being facilitated by the city. And so we want to be part of the team that's working to identify what long term livability can look like. These themes intersected with our internal knowledge of the institution and advocacy to advance community aims. To produce the list of strategies that you see included in our final document. And thanks for letting me kind of dig in there.
Thank you, Jamie. And Lena, so I think that concludes our our presentation and our submission of of this plan for city councils. Consideration. I say conclusion, but really it, I hope we were able to demonstrate through this presentation and through the plan itself. How this is only a starting point for the next 10 years for Pitt and the community that we we live in. Whether the very specific requirement in the plan that we owe. City planning, a historic preservation plan for those historic structures that we have on campus. Or one of the 74 strategies that Jamie talked about in very specific community oriented. Things that we have to do to those individual development sites as that 10 years advances and and sites come forward and go through a full. Public and transparent process for the development. Of any of those facilities as they take shape from the yellow box that they're presented in today to that finished solution. We look forward to working with the city on those developments and we'd be happy to take any questions apart of our plan. Thank you.
Thank you. We will, well, let the record reflect that we have been joined by council members Bobby Wilson. Daniel LaBelle, Deborah Gross and Council President Teresa Kalesmith had joined us for a period of time. We will now move to testimony from registered speakers. For the speakers, please give your name and address for the public record and just please note that you will have three minutes to address council. Our first registered speaker is Thomas Longstaff, followed by Kathleen Gallagher.
Hi, my name is Tom Longstaff. I live, am an owner and board member at the Atrium Condominium Association at 307 South Dithrid Street. Our building is positioned across death ridge from Bellafield Hall and Bellfold Avenue and adjacent. To the parking lot of the Forbes Craig's apartment at 4531 Fifth Avenue. Both of these University of Pittsburgh properties are included in the in the rezoning plan for the University of Pittsburgh. And I would like to ask for the following three actions prior to moving forward on bill 1448. First, I believe the plan for Bellfold Hall is an internal renovation only with no change to the use of the building. I'd like to have that verified. Number two, I understand that the dining facilities of the Forbes Craig Apartments will be expanded. And would like to assure there is adequate food waste removal, so there's not a significant increased risk of rodents in the area. And thirdly, I understand that the parking of the Forbes Craig Apartments will be expanded. And I would like to assure that a traffic study is undertaken to assure that there will be no significant impact to the entrance of the atrium on Fillmore Street. Nor access to the CMU police station. I thank you very much for your attention to these concerns and very much appreciate the community engagement. Jamie, especially that you've been doing and others. And I'm confident that these will be easy to address, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speak, registered speaker is Kathleen Gallagher, followed by Vincent Johnson.
My name is Kathleen Gallagher and I live at 234 North Dithrid Street in the North Oakland section. In the interest of clarity, I would like to first state that I am also currently. President of the Bellfield Area Citizens Association. Our association voted unanimously to support the University of Pittsburgh's IMP. And we have submitted that in writing. So my comments today are purely personal as a very long term Oakland resident. I have been involved in the IMTP process with Pitt for two years of meetings. I found it to be very open, meticulous, and every issue that we brought up was addressed. Even minor communities concerns were addressed at these many meetings. A number of community requests. Regarding outreach and engagement have already been addressed. So the community is very thankful for that. For example, we have better information regarding activities that are available to community members. We are particularly pleased that as going forward, the individual projects will be brought back to the community. And addressed in more specific manner so that we didn't have to address the entire plan for the next 10 years at one time. As a community resident, I'm also. Very pleased and impressed with the increased efforts to encourage interaction among students and residents. Of course, code enforcement has been our priority for us for many years. And student housing and I will say. And I will say that even one of the meetings, we even got on a, uh, pit shuttle and drove around and looked at housing in the community. So those were issues that were very important to us and they have been addressed. I personally am happy to see preservation addressed in the IMP. It's a subject that's very close to my heart. And that Pitt has made efforts to maintain the architectural integrity of Oakland. As a longtime teacher in the Hill District, I have to say. That every time I read an activity at the Community Engagement Center, I am thrilled. So as a resident, I will say that. We are grateful to the, for, to the university for an opportunity to participate and their, and for their support to our neighborhoods. So I would encourage you to support the institutional master plan as we have. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathy. Next speaker is Vincent Johnson, followed by Ikana Halmaquina.
Good afternoon. My name is Vincent Johnson. I reside at one twenty-eight North Craig Street in the Park Plaza condo. I'm Vice President of the Park Plaza Condo Council. I'm a committee member for the Fourth Ward Democratic Committee. And I'm also an employee of the University of Pittsburgh and my intent today is to say how impressed I am with the thoroughness. Of the institutional master plan. Um, I am appreciative of the connections made with community engagement. The thoughtful consideration of open space. I really like the plan for storm water management and integration with environmental strategies for protection going forward. The plans for sustainability, infrastructure and mobility are spot on. So as a person who lives in North Oakland, um, is a member of, uh, one of the Democratic Committees that. Participates in the electoral process and an employee of the University of Pittsburgh. I do say that I'm very impressed with the plans that are laid out and the comprehensive nature. Of the studies that have taken place in the plans going forward. So congratulations for all your hard work. And especially with your efforts to connect with the community over these last few years on this master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ikana Halmaquina, followed by Rachel O'Neill.
Greetings and good day. My title is Ikana Halmaquina. I am the Grand Inca, the Airclaw Confederacy. Of Aboriginal American people. And I thank city council and the members of UPMC, representing UPMC. For being here today to express your plans for your master plan. What's not included in this master plan is your plan for your employees. Who are a vital asset and the most important part of this master plan. My daughter works for UPMC. However, she has not received any hazard pay. For the one clause missing in the equation in her receiving hazard pay. Is that she worked overtime in order to receive this hazard pay. The other thing is parking. Have you considered that your employees need parking? I know you have designated spaces for parking, but it's at a cost for your employees. And how it would be an enhancement and also an incentive for your employees if the parking was made free. You are a top earner in this region and beyond. You're a university that has hospitals as well. And yet, your community engagement and tax exempt status has still been in question. And I would just employ you to do some of your, in, in community engagement beyond the limits of Oakland. Because UPMC reaches far beyond the area known as Oakland. And to also include indigenous people in your master plan. Because we are the people and the rightful stewards of this land and yet we have not been reached out to. Nor have we been consulted during the development that UPMC continues to do on our land. If you are interested in having this dialogue with us, I can be reached at four one two, five eight three, zero nine, three nine. As I am the chief of my nation, I thank you for hearing my concerns and you have a good day. And I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. I do want to clarify for anyone listening. That this is an institutional master planning process for University of Pittsburgh Institution. UPMC is a separate institution that would have a separate institutional master planning process. Next up, we have Rachel O'Neill, although there was some confusion as to whether Rachel was, uh, intending to testify or, or added as a panelist. So please. Correct me, um, if, if Rachel is not testifying, um, followed by Karimaji Rajumba.
Uh, good afternoon. My name is Rachel O'Neill. I am a representative of the university from Reed Smith and I will not be testifying.
Thank you very much. So next up is Karimaji Rajumba, followed by, uh, Michael Costu.
Yes, uh, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Karimaji Rajumba. And I am representing the Pittsburgh History and Landmarks Foundation. I, um, sorry, uh, first of all, I did not get the entire presentation as I was running late. Uh, so I, I had references to aspects of preservation. So if, uh, there have been changes to my understanding of what was in the plan that we found objectionable. Uh, you have my apologies, but as it stands, um, our concern with regards to the institutional master plan. Um, was we, as far as the proposed, uh, demolition. Um, uh, which we understood, uh, that Pitt was proposing. Uh, of the Gardner Steel Center and the O'Hara Steel, uh, and the O'Hara Street, uh, Student Center buildings. Uh, we think these are, uh, significant buildings that, uh, uh, represent, uh, architecture integrity of. Oakland and the building aesthetic of the City Beautiful Movement, which is, uh, unique in, in this part of, uh, the state. And in Oakland itself and the growth of Oakland. These buildings are both, um, in, uh, the, uh, Shenley Farms National Historic District. Uh, for a reason, uh, we think that they are there because, uh, their significance. Um, in terms of, um, the role they play in the beauty of Oakland. Uh, we would, uh, strongly oppose any idea, or we've been thinking about demolishing these buildings. Uh, given their significance to the very essence of what Oakland is, what makes Oakland Oakland. Um, so we, we would like to register our position to that idea. And that's, uh, for the most part, uh, where we, we have a problem. Uh, we have no problem with the rest of the plan. We in fact, uh, think it's, uh, very progressive. Um, and frankly, we're surprised that, uh, that, that it would include, uh, any notion of the idea of demolishing these significant structures. Uh, so that is, uh, our submission again. Um, if there has been movement on, on, on that thinking. Um, uh, you have my apologies, but, uh, we wanted to register that.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michael Costu, followed by Shaman Pohmai. Um, although it is my under impression that Michael is also, um, not testifying. If you can confirm that, please.
Uh, thank you, Councilperson. Uh, I would like to just, uh, offer a couple of notes if I could.
Of course, of course, please, please proceed.
Sure. Michael Costu, uh, two-two-five Fifth Avenue with Reed Smith. I represent the University of Pittsburgh. Um, the, the only thing I wanted to bring up is with respect to, uh, historic district requirements. We, we do address those in the institutional master plan. Uh, the university understands that it must adhere to all historic review requirements. Uh, and in fact, there would be a very robust historic review process that we would need to go through. Uh, to the extent that we are proposing any changes or modifications or demolitions, uh, with respect to, um, buildings within any historic district. So that this IMP does not change that. Uh, and we, we, we understand that we still have to adhere to that project, uh, process. Uh, and that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Shaman Pohmai, followed by Roberto Cantio. I don't see Shaman Pohmai on the list, so we will move to our last registered speaker, Roberto Cantio.
I'm, I'm, I'm unmuting now. Okay. Um, my name is Roberto Cantio. I'm an elder and trustee at Belfield Presbyterian Church. Located at four thousand one Fifth Avenue, at the intersection of Thackeray and Fifth Avenue. Um, we are in favor of the university master plan, but we have two, two cons, we have a great relationship with the university. Over the years, um, um, we live right next to the, the university club and the new freshman dorm. Um, and, uh, we do have two concerns. Uh, the first one is in twenty nineteen, we incurred over sixty thousand dollars in damages. Related to flooding caused when the storm sewer backed up into our basement. The plan presented by the university includes two significant new and larger buildings in the block just north. And above our building. This will result in additional stress on the already inadequate system storm sewer system. And we would like to hear about the plans to address this problem. The second one, um, it, it has to do more with the, the process of construction and, and, uh, yeah, construction. Uh, we recently experienced a power outage during our Sunday morning worship. Due to some construction activity on Thackeray Street. We had no prior warning that this will be taking place. And needless to say, it was very disruptive to the service. We simply asked that we are communicated with. With, with, so, uh, when we can have input on this matter and make plans accordingly. Sunday is our main day, as you can, uh, understand that. And so when you're making plans for any disruption of services, we have to work together. Uh, that's all we have and, and thank you so much for the plan and for the time to present our, uh, concerns.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. I would like to. Uh, turn this over now to my fellow council colleagues for any questions that they might have. Councilwoman Gross, do you have questions for the, the University of Pittsburgh team?
Yeah, thank you. I'm sure I don't have any questions this time.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Um, the only, the only questions that I have relate to. This, the, the speakers that already, uh, registered some questions or had, um, some concerns. I just wanted to give the University of Pittsburgh team time to respond to any of those questions publicly, um, if you would like to.
Sure. This is Owen Cooks. Um, I can respond to, um, Mr. Longstaff's questions. I think the first question had to do with Bellfield Hall and whether we were, um, planning just an internal renovation. Um, that's correct. And so, uh, change of use, of course, is, is governed by zoning, not the, the IMP in a situation like that. Um, there was also a comment about, uh, the expansion of food service at Forbes Craig. Um, that's not a part of our plans. That's one of our smaller residence hall facilities. Um, and we have other food service alternatives. Um, should there be food service, then of course we would. Ensure that waste receptacles and management would be a part of that in an appropriate way, uh, to ensure we didn't have a, a problem. Um, and then, uh, there was also a comment, uh, expressed about traffic studies. Um, so just like every project that's in one of those yellow development envelopes, we go through the city process again. And in more detail to ensure all the requirements the IMP are met. And then all of the city ordinances and, and code requirements, including studying traffic and, and light and so on. And that entire process would be surrounded by a community engagement process throughout to ensure we're. Um, connecting with our neighbors, not just following the ordinance required development activities, meetings, but truly engaged two-way conversations. Um, to have, have development done in an appropriate way. Um, I'd also like the opportunity to, to respond to the last comment about, um, development around the, uh, U Club site. Um, it's, uh, as a part of the city's review process and what we go through with PWSA on any. Uh, new facilities, um, we're required to go through a pretty extensive study to ensure that taps into sewer systems. Or water systems, um, are of an appropriate size and nature, uh, to ensure that we're not contributing to overflows. Um, and where necessary, we expand those systems, often at the university's cost to ensure, um, that we're keeping the, the system flowing the way it should. Um, in terms of the process of construction, it sounds like a really unfortunate incident there on Thackeray. I can't really speak with, with any assurance that it was a university contractor or something else. Um, we do use our community process to get, um, notices out there. Um, whether it's setting up a crane or closing a street or whatever, certainly on a, something the scale of a power outage. Um, we would work with our neighbors should it affect any non-university, um, properties, um, to schedule that in advance. Um, perhaps a, a line was hit during construction. Um, but I think we do have processes at the university for those things that can be planned. Um, to ensure that we work with our neighbors, um, to, to allow that to happen. Um, and then speaking to the historic preservation comments, um, I think, uh, Mary Beth McGrew had. Um, some things to say specifically about Gardner Steel, um, and, um, the O'Hara Student Center.
Am I permitted to speak? Yeah. Oh, um, well, we are doing a historic. Structures report as is required. And so we will look at each of those buildings as needed. Uh, one example of a recent building was the Croatian Fraternal Order where the building is. Uh, really not in good shape, but we're preserving that unique facade, uh, to put on a building behind. That will be some, some feet behind it. So I appreciate your comments and, uh, the need to preserve. Uh, as far as, as much as we can, historic structures in the neighborhood. So each of those though will be brought forward as independent, uh, projects and not just routinely demolished.
Thank you. Was there anyone else from the University of Pittsburgh team who wanted to respond to any questions from the? From the registered speakers before I, I give some final remarks? Okay, seeing no, I will just say that, um, I believe that this process has been. A full and complete process. I believe that public engagement began, correct me if I'm wrong, in twenty seventeen. So it's been, it was started a long time ago and there has been meeting after a meeting and as was stated by many of the. Um, those who spoke that, you know, really the university and its team has bent over backwards to accommodate requests. Meeting requests, types of meetings, traveling meetings, meetings on-site to really help the community understand. How such a large institution that really, you know, we're talking about university institutions, their city unto themselves. How it'll impact and, and, and mesh with the existing neighborhoods of Oakland and beyond. Um, and it's a huge plan. It's hard to get your arms around, but I think this presentation does, does that. So thank you for, for all your, your work consolidating the plan into an easy to understand, um, presentation. And I personally am, um, especially enthusiastic about the sustainability goals, the sort of integration of. Of, of spaces that kind of human-centered spaces on the hillsides and. And integrating the campus with not only the neighborhood surrounding it, but with, you know, with the ecosystem, surrounding ecosystem. And being, being very responsive to those needs when it comes to stormwater, when it comes to energy efficiency, when it comes to, um, parking demand. And when it comes to the community fabric of these neighborhoods as well and the, the commitment to the ongoing engagement. And, and as we discussed the last time we were briefed as council, um, you know, showing the progress through a dashboard is really important to me as well. So really appreciate all that work. Um, because of the many years of engagement, I don't have any questions at this point. I think all of them have been answered. So, um, so I think that we can wrap. so I think that we can wrap up this hearing. Unless there's anything else for the good of the order, looking for hands? Okay, having exhausted the business of this public hearing, the meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.